All right, I'm calling the Urbana City Council meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Bowersox?
Here.
Mr. Garrick?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing?
Here. First item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, November 17.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Stevenson, seconded by Lewis. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, that motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, petitions and communications. I have some people who would like to address the city council, and if you would like to say something, please fill out one of these little white cards. First, I believe, is Erin Bullock. Please state your name and address, and limit your comments to five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Erin Bullock. I live at 404 Sunny Crest Court West. These people behind me here are some of my neighbors. The issue that I wanted to come and talk to you about today, you have in front of you a petition that was circulated in our neighborhood. On October 31st, the green space in the between two cul-de-sacs that hit back-to-back, Sunny Crest Court West and Sunny Crest Court East, was essentially clear-cut from shrubbery and foliage that had been growing in that corridor between the two cul-de-sacs for many, many years. This was something that was done without input or notice to the neighborhood. It was a very significant change to the physical environment, and the staff member that was approached during the clearing of this particular green space was extremely disrespectful to the member of the resident that questioned him. Obviously, what's done is done. There are many of us that are very upset about the result through an informal canvassing of our neighborhood. Seventeen households were questioned about their feelings on this particular matter. Fourteen of them did not like how it currently looks now that all the green area has been cleared. Two of them do like the way, or I'm sorry, three of them do like the way that it looks. And, but sixteen of the seventeen did not like the way that it was done with absolutely no input or notice to the neighborhood. What we're asking now is, first of all, that city policy be reviewed so that this kind of thing does not happen again, and we are also asking that neighborhood input be involved in replanting this green space. If you, if any of you have ever visited this particular area, and in fact Lynn lives on one of the, I'm sorry, Councilperson Barnes lives on one of these cul-de-sacks, the nature of the neighborhood is very child-friendly because you can tell it's a cul-de-sac. You know it's not a through street. There's a green space in the center of the cul-de-sac where children and families gather. The clearing of this green space, as I said, took place on Halloween. That evening, when many children were out trick-or-treating, a car passed through over the cleared, basically dirt area between the two cul-de-sacks, essentially making these two cul-de-sacks a through street. This is a danger and something that has caused serious injury on other cul-de-sacks just a couple blocks down, the mistaking of these four through streets, and we feel that this is a very serious issue and has really changed the physical nature of our neighborhood. So, a couple of my neighbors and some of our children, those that are not either afraid of the weather or sick, have come to kind of add their opinions to.
My name's Beth Parrott, and I live at 406 Sunny Crest Court West, and thank you for reviewing our petition. The petition is more from the residents of Sunny Crest Court West, but the canvassing also included Sunny Crest Court East. Just, again, I believe that Erin has really expressed our concerns very well. I think a lot of the, a lot of the character of Urbana, what draws people to choose a home in Urbana, is the individual neighborhoods, and personally, I felt very upset that some of the character of our neighborhood and the feel of our neighborhood and kind of why we choose to raise our children there had been removed by this act. So, many of us felt rather strongly that we would really like something to be done to replant. And fortunately, I have heard that there is some talk of doing that, and I've been very thankful that that is going to be looked into. The Arborist has mentioned that that may be something that can be done. So, we respectfully request that for the betterment and restoration of our neighborhood and also for our safety. Truly, we are concerned about cars coming straight through. We've seen it happen. People think it's a through street. You know, the way it looked before was very clearly, clear that you couldn't go through. Now you can go right on through, and they're little children. That's the nature of our neighborhood. That's where they play. So, please carefully consider our request that this area be replanted with some input from the neighborhood. Thank you.
Anybody else want to comment?
I'm Anwin Parrott. This is my brother Jack. We live at 406 Sunny Crest Court West, and he wrote this, but he wants me to read it, so I'll read it. He says, "I'm very disappointed that the city took down the beautiful plants by our park. The plants did not only provide beauty and great hiding spots, but safety for the younger children on the street. There have been eyewitness reports of people that have driven through the previously two-foot space, now 20 feet. All of the kids have or are playing in the cul-de-sac at the edge of our street. We have never had cars, wait, sorry. We have never had cars drive for, drive through this like they did. This never happened before. Thank you for taking your time and please replace our plants." Do you want to add, Jack?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to comment?
My name is Emily Svenson. I live at 407 Sunny Crest Court West. This is my daughter, Fia. I just, I want to underscore what they said, but pardon me if there's any redundancy here, but I just wanted to say I felt it was very unfortunate that the city took action on what I understand was a single citizen's complaint, a citizen that lives a block away, and felt that our cul-de-sac was unsafe because of the, all the vegetation there. And I would suggest that people who don't feel safe in a cul-de-sac situation with no streetlights and lots of vegetation, that there are plenty of other streets in Urbana that you can walk down that are well-lit where that would not be an issue. So, I also feel that we basically live on a through street now, and whereas I never felt unsafe in our neighborhood before, I actually do feel nervous about my kids being out there now because of, it's just so easy to drive right through. If I didn't live there and I didn't have small children 20 years ago, I would have been that person driving across. It's that easy. There's just nothing to stop someone. I was told on the phone, actually on Halloween, which is now many weeks ago, that there would be some sort of barricade put up, and that has not yet occurred. So, anyway. The most upsetting part of this, though, was that the city did make a unilateral decision to change the longstanding character of our neighborhood without notifying us or asking for input, and I would sincerely hope that in the future, the merit of one citizen complaint would be fairly balanced with the citizens, the other citizens of that neighborhood. One of the arguments for taking down everything was that the area was overgrown with invasive species. Now, I have spoken with several of my friends who are landscape architects, biologists, and their response to that was almost uniformly, the idea of invasive species in an urban setting has a little bit different connotation than that of something in, like a prairie restoration project or something of that nature. And in any case, you certainly could go in and take out just the invasive species and not do the clear-cut that occurred. There was crab apple, there was lilac, there were other trees, things in there that are not considered invasive species. What happened was also historically unprecedented. Our neighbors across the street who have lived there since Sunny Crest Court was created, which is now 55-plus years ago, say that there has always been trees and shrubs there. It's never been clear-cut. It's never been grass. So, this has never happened before. I don't think anybody would argue that this area didn't need some pruning and some attention. I think we all feel that that was called for, but not this. I do want to say, though, that I have been in communication with Mike Brunk. He came, I think that's the name, right?
Yes.
Okay. He came by last week. Unfortunately, I was the only one who was home in the neighborhood, but he met with me, and he was extremely, he was really excited to work with us about things. So, I feel some hope for where this will go, but just wanted to let you know how we felt about the way it happened.
Thank you very much. We'll probably end up with something better than what you had, if you got Mike Brunk working on it. Yes?
If I can just kind of mention something, and thank you for coming. One of the neighbors on your street came down and told me about this, maybe about a week ago, I think, and so we've been in communication, and you're right, the city's all about putting up something that will help to keep this from being a thoroughfare. Mike had talked about even a couple, you know, burms, you know, raised dirt areas which would work well with some plantings on them, and, you know, so I think the mayor's right that it'll probably turn out to be something a lot better and still be safe.
So, thank you very much. Sorry you went through all that.
The real, Mayor, the real question here is, why did it happen in the first place like this? I mean, you know...
We'll look into it, but we can't decide that right now.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, here's Bill Gray.
I apologize to you folks on Sunny Crest. I'm the person that spoke with Mr. Holmes. I had the misunderstanding that there was conversations on the sunny courts east and west. I just live a couple blocks southeast, so I'm very knowledgeable of where you live, and it was a mistake. You know, I, we were told to go ahead and let's do it, and hindsight being 2020, we would have gotten both courts involved, and we didn't do it and apologize, but we're going to try to make it better, and it won't be a through street, I can guarantee you that. So, that's why we mess up, so I apologize to not letting everybody. I think we pride ourselves in getting people involved in things, and this was something then, doing 50 things on my desk one day, I said, "Let's get it done, let's do it." So, that's what happened, and I relay my apologies to your, you know, your neighbors and such, but we'll make it better.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Bill. Is there anyone else who would like to address the city council? Okay, let's move on. I don't believe we have any old business. Reports of standing committees? We didn't have a committee last week, right?
Thanks, Gary.
We don't have reports of special committees. Does anybody want to talk about, no, just kidding. Reports of officers. Tom Carino, economic development. Gary, do you want to talk after this? I missed your sheet here because it was a different color. Okay, sorry about that.
Evening. You should have received this afternoon a, this month's economic development report from Ryan Bro. Just briefly to go over the report, some activity downtown with soon-to-be-opened floral design shop in the former record swap space known as Flourish, beads and botanicals now open on North Broadway, and the Morning Cup and More is expected to be open sometime this month. I'm not sure if we have an exact opening date, but that is in the Stratford residences and hopefully be opening this month. Elsewhere in the city, some activity on Phila Road in that we do have plans and work is set to begin on Burger King in the former Centrue Bank Building, and also you've seen some construction with Heartland Bank, which is going to be on an outlot in front of the former Julosco. And then on North Lincoln, construction has begun on an 84-room Comfort Suites hotel that is just to the east of the Holiday Inn. So, fair amount of activity in the city and a fair number of things to report on. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you very much, Tom. Okay, Gary Seiko.
Well, that's strange, isn't it? Isn't it standard? Oh, okay. Got it. Usually use the Mac, and this is a...
PC Challenge.
Yeah, yeah. Let's see if I can get this up there, too. Yeah, that's, sound works pretty well.
It's not enough to do the song, man.
Yeah. When you unplug it, plug it back in. Trying to get the... Turn it back on, Charlie. It's flashing here. Okay, okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. This is in response to the Cunningham Beautification Project, and there was some comments, suggestions there about a roundabout, and I looked at some of the reactions to this, and this sort of spurred me on to just create this little mini presentation about roundabouts and maybe to get the city council up to date on this. The important thing on this first one is that this presentation is online, and you can see it by just going to G Seiko, my initial last name, and today's date, 2008, 12/1.notlong.com, and it's all there, and all of the references are all linked to this. Basically, what I want to do is show a two-minute video. I don't know if this has been done before at city council meetings, but we're going to give this a try. The quality of the video isn't terrific, but I think it's worth looking at, so we'll try this here.
The modern roundabout is a circular intersection with design features that promote safe and efficient traffic flow around a center island. Entering traffic goes through a curve that's sharp enough to slow vehicles to about 15 to 20 miles per hour, and drivers yield to the circulating traffic. Speeds are kept low because drivers have to go around the curves in a roundabout. Drivers approaching a roundabout reduce their speeds and look for vehicles already in the circle. After entering, drivers proceed to their exits. The overall result is slow and smooth movement. At traditional intersections, some of the most common crashes are right-angle and left-turn collisions. These can be severe because the vehicles often are going fast to make it through a green light. At roundabouts, these crashes essentially are eliminated because vehicles travel in the same direction and at slower speeds. Converting intersections to roundabouts reduces all crashes 40% and injury crashes 80%. There also are significant improvements in traffic flow, which lead to reduced emissions and fuel consumption. Roundabouts may be controversial when they're proposed, but public opinion changes once they're built. Motorists soon find out through their own experience the safety and traffic flow benefits, and then show enthusiastic support for roundabouts.
That was produced by the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety, and they have invested interest in reducing accidents. There are five other videos here, total of nine minutes. That's your homework, from the state of Washington. So, take a look at those if you really want to know something about roundabouts. Just to add a few things, less waiting at a roundabout, less air pollution, less fuel use, less noise, less land use, the extra left and right turn lanes are not needed, less stormwater runoff and water pollution, as much less impermeable surface area, that center island is natural surfaces, less ugliness, less operational and maintenance costs can save up around $5,000 a year, and of course, less crashes, 40% less, 80% less injuries, 90% less deaths and incapacitating injuries with roundabouts. So, about 100 of these in the U.S., started by Nevada, their gamble's there, right? Washington State, Colorado, Kansas, and Maryland are leaders, becoming increasingly popular in Minnesota, Wisconsin, and Indiana. Minnesota, Wisconsin, now, all requests for signalized intersections must be addressed by a roundabout design. If you look at recent action here, Federal Highway Administration, a memo in 2008, roundabouts are the preferred safety alternative for wide range of intersections. They should be considered as an alternative for all proposed intersections. Roundabouts should also be considered for all existing intersections that haven't identified as needing major safety or operational improvements. This would include freeway interchange, ramp terminals, and rural intersections. Illinois, where are we in Illinois? Illinois, east-central Illinois in particular, are behind nationally and regionally in the provision of this proven safety highway measure. Those are the words of the Federal Highways Administration. Now, Minnesota, Wisconsin, they got Germans and Scandinavians, they're progressive. Being behind them is not too bad, but Indiana? I don't know. The regional IDOT office appears for some reason to have been reluctant to suggest or approve roundabouts in our district. So, this is some comments made to IDOT's Joseph Crowe, to Urbana's Bill Gray, about the Cunningham roundabout suggestion in the report. "The district does not view Cunningham Avenue as a suitable route for roundabout. There are no modern roundabouts either built nor in planning stages in the 70s central Illinois counties that comprise District 5." Comment, "This raises the question, why are there no roundabouts if, in fact, this is a proven highway safety measure? Makes you question the role of IDOT in fulfilling its responsibility to ensure the safety of our roadways." Mr. Crowe says, "A two-lane roundabout on a roadway with an average daily traffic of over 22,000 vehicles should not give the public's first experience with a modern roundabout. Several communities in the U.S. have successfully constructed two-lane roundabouts as their first roundabouts, three communities in Colorado I could find." Mr. Crowe says, "The pedestrian ability goals outlined in the report would not be served by roundabout. My comment, roundabouts have been found to be very safe for pedestrians based on studies involving 23 roundabouts in the U.S., 72 in Sweden, 1,200 in Australia," the reference attached. "Visually impaired pedestrians typically struggle to find audible clues to determine safe gaps for crossing streets approaching a roundabout." Those are Mr. Crowe's comments, statement. "My comment is that there is no evidence that these are more dangerous for the visually impaired, and the same thing that makes roundabouts safer for visually unimpaired pedestrians, fewer conflict points, fewer lanes to cross, split or islands, reduce speeds, all make roundabouts safer for visually impaired, too." This is a little bit of an example of what we currently have at Perkins and Cunningham. It's a four-lane and a two-lane crossing, right? Currently, so the thing is, oh, they're complicated, nobody can understand these, you're going to kill yourself, right? Okay, well, just take a look at this. We're going west on Perkins into Cunningham. Right now, there's a three-lane entry, all right? You want to move, turn right, you have to move to the right-hand turnway. You want to turn left, you have to move to the left. Those are two obligatory lane changes if you want to make a turn. Stay in the through lane and go straight ahead. If they're a roundabout there, one-lane entry, no lane to choose, go right, left, or straight ahead, all from a single lane, no obligatory lane changes required. Heading north on Cunningham, now four right lanes, to what we now have is a four-lane entry, you have to move to the right, make a right, move far left, those are obligatory changes. To go straight ahead, you stay on one of the two lanes that are there. Roundabout would be a two-lane entry, choose the right lane to go right. Now, think how complicated this is. You choose, you're already there probably in the right lane to go right. Want to make a left turn? Go left. Want to go straight ahead? Doesn't matter, just stay where you are, okay? No obligatory lane changes whatsoever. Summary, currently, there are, with a roundabout, you'd have six entry lanes instead of 13, a reduction of 54% of the lanes, zero versus the six actual obligatory lane changes, reduction of 100%. The roundabout is much simpler. And here's a little diagram if you want to see what that looks like. I don't have my magnifier on here for some reason, it didn't show up, but you can see basically, I think, that if you're coming, as I was saying, heading west, east, west, right? Okay, you don't have to make any changes, you can go right, you can go straight, you can make your left turn, no lane changes. If you're coming north on Cunningham, you get into the right lane to make a right, you get into the left lane to go around and make the left, and you can take either lane to go straight ahead. Very simple. Okay, so, just a quick mental analogy. No, you don't.
Too late.
Right to left? Yeah. I'm saying you don't, there's only one entry lane. You can't change anything on entry, right?
So, you come in, you've got to cross over to that center island.
You, you, what, no, you, what you do coming in here, you're simply going on the circulatory roadway. That's all you're doing. You're going straight, you go into circulatory roadway, and you continue out straight. Well, okay.
You're... You have to make a lane change there.
You're...
You have to make a lane change there.
You yield to the traffic to the left? You, oh, you going to call that a lane change? Okay. Okay, what I'm talking about, I was talking about the entry. At this level, it's still simpler, but, yes? Okay, did you have a question?
I did have a question. You talked about $5,000 savings in maintenance.
Yeah.
$5,000 a year?
That's a figure I heard on one study.
For one intersection or for what?
Well, for the maintenance and the electricity.
Oh, for running the stoplights, okay.
You don't need any traffic signals.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Dennis?
This is a very interesting discussion. I'm pleased that you brought it forward. Another thing that I noticed about the roundabout construction is that it doesn't require signals. Is that correct?
That's right, sorry.
So, isn't that a very major savings on a road construction project not to have to install stop signs, you know, stoplight signals?
Yes.
Okay, so would that be considered a savings, I would think, right?
Yes, well, I was talking about the maintenance.
Maintenance, okay.
The initial construction can be more complicated because you have quite a bit of work to do here in the center. So, in terms of actually building it, I don't know about that, but the maintenance costs are less, obviously, because there's no lights to worry about and there's electricity to run on, and no power needed in the, other than the lighting that you might have anyway.
I know that this is used in Carmel, Indiana, quite a bit, and if they say that Region 5, District 5, doesn't have any roundabouts, well, they haven't given us any money either, I think. That's sort of a big problem. Charlie, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I thought they had one in, coming in Bloomington-Normal.
There's one being constructed in Bloomington. It deviates somewhat from what you might call a modern roundabout. They will have pedestrian access to the center island, and so Mr. Crowe says that's not a modern roundabout, so he doesn't count that.
Okay, yeah, I guess, you know, one thing you got to look, you know, this is a good place for public art.
So, were there any other technical questions about...
Heather?
I can hear that you're saying that there's savings when it comes to maintenance, and that there's savings because you don't have to put stoplights or whatever, but is there really a savings when it comes to the construction of a roundabout?
That's what I was mentioning before.
I'm sorry, I went to the restroom.
Yeah, it, I don't know. It may be more expensive. Retrofits are always going to cost you something more, but I'm not, I'm not expert in constructing this. I'm interested in this as a... I'm interested in this as a, as a citizen and as a cyclist primarily, in having lived sometimes in Europe and seeing how wonderfully they work in France and in Ireland and in England. So, and knowing that this is now recommended, I mean, the, so it's the savings in lives that is really the most important. So, the analogy, if I could continue, and if there are other technical questions, we can go back, back to this, imagine you find out about a drug that's been used for decades in Europe and other American states for over, and for those over sixty years, this drug reduces your risk of cancer by eighty percent, reduces cancer deaths by ninety percent, has only positive side effects, makes you look more attractive, reduces obesity, eliminates flatulence, these are the other things, such as reducing water pollution, reducing noise and air pollution. It's cheaper than vitamin pills. Would any seniors here not be interested in taking this drug? I mean, this is basically what we have in roundabouts, east central Illinois, Urbana's neglected roundabouts is clearly incompatible with the development of Urbana as an attractive, sustainable, and safe city in the twenty-first century. And I have references there, again, a reminder that you can look at this on the web, you can look at the videos, you can look at the reports, and educate people about this, I think is important.
Thank you very much, very good presentation.
Okay, you're welcome.
Dennis Roberts.
My report's a brief one, and it has an ironic tie-in to the one that we just saw as a matter of going to Detroit over the Thanksgiving vacation, this is my Thanksgiving report. I decided that finally I would actually stop in the town of Urbana, Champaign County, Ohio, which I did, for the first time I saw it, I visited it, I had dinner there, and I had dinner in a beautiful downtown restaurant in a historic building, as a matter of fact, the entire plaza of the downtown of Urbana, Ohio, is historic buildings that have been preserved, some of them date from seventeen hundreds. And I learned from the waitress who was a historic buff about some of the tie-ins with Clark Reynolds, Clark, who was the, one of the gentlemen who helped plat that town and whose father then moved to Champaign, and, and his son, and the son was the one who platted Urbana, well, actually, helped create the town of Urbana. He didn't plat it, but he helped pass the resolution that created the division of Verminley County into two counties. And I wanted to say that, interesting enough, they have a town square, which is actually a motor drive, two state routes cross downtown, and they have a large public statue in the center, and so basically, all traffic in the center of town is a roundabout, and they have roundabout signage up at every intersection entrance to make the appropriate crossing to the next lane, or whatever lane of your choice, and certainly, appropriate signage is important in directing traffic in a roundabout situation. So it's not a true roundabout in the classic sense that you just presented to us, but in fact, it, it, it functions as a roundabout. So I just thought that was very interesting, and I left one of our commemorative calendars at, you know, downtown with the restaurant owners, which they said would be putting up in their restaurant, and passed out a few Urbana bucks.
You didn't pay for your meal with the Urbana bucks, did you?
Just the tip.
Okay. Okay, thanks a lot. Anyone else want to address the city council?
I have a couple of quick things.
Charlie.
Well, Dennis, you may have given Gary an idea, you know, we could probably put three down Main Street if you wanted to. I'm asking to have two resolutions put on next, on our next committee agenda, a resolution supporting the Employee Free Choice Act, and a resolution to provide financial reporting on the internet for the city of Urbana. These are two items that are personal of interest. I've started circulating a couple of drafts, you've got these in your email, Clerk has them, and so on, so entertain feedback to me this week on the wording of this, with the idea that we would discuss these Monday, a week from now. I have a few copies here if anybody wants paper. Thank you.
Are there any other reports of officers? Okay, under new business, a motion to accept the Cunningham Avenue beautification final report. Ryan Bros here, from Community Development.
Good evening, everyone. Want to thank Mr. Zico for making that presentation. It'd actually be good if he was able to make that to our IDOT district representatives, since they actually have the final say on the Cunningham right-of-way, as far as what happens there, but this is a, just bringing back, there was a presentation made to you all back on October twentieth by the consultant, CBA consultant, and at that time, you had reviewed what was the most up-to-date version of the final report at that time, and so, at that time, I had mentioned that we would, we were awaiting some comments from IDOT and some further review. It has actually gone to Plan Commission, and they had a chance to look it over, and they made some comments which are also attached to the memorandum here, and you also have attached the comments that IDOT had made, including their comments regarding the roundabout and some other issues on there, and their comments were such that we didn't feel that any major modifications needed to be made to the final report, but rather, we thought that it would be best that there would just be an addendum to the final report of their comments, and also, there was just a couple little minor typographical page number errors that I found in that previous version of the final report, and so, if you'd like me to rehash what the study is about generally, the goal of the study, again, was to identify ways to improve the Cunningham corridor as an urban environment, increasing redevelopment, potential multimodal use and connection to the downtown, and it was specifically identified as part of the redevelopment plan laid out in the Cunningham Avenue Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan to For Plan, and also, as part of the City Council Multi-Year Goals and Work Plan from 2006, and also, it's shown as an area of concern on the Urbana Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Maps. And so, again, about a year ago, we, we went through the process of selecting consultants to work on this beautification study, and we selected CBA consultants out of Minneapolis, and we, we basically, back in November of 2007, started the data acquisition, market analysis, and kickoff meetings, and held several stakeholder input sessions, and met with the business owners, had neighborhood business group meetings, coordination meetings, IDOT, and then August of this year, we got the first final report draft, and then we've been going back and forth, reviewing it, making comments, and suggested changes to it ever since with CBA. And so, what you have now, what is currently online on the city website, is the most up-to-date version that we have, and again, the recommendations of the report are essentially, the main points were, "Use of integral colored score concrete at the major intersections along the corridor, use of ornamental trees to enhance designated intersections, plant new and maintain existing street trees along the corridor, use raised decorative planters at key intersections and at the I-74 interchange, construct six-foot wide sidewalks on sides of Cunningham Avenue, south of Kenyon Road," and we actually believe that only currently in the zoning, five-foot sidewalks are recommended, are required along those two sides, but that would be an issue that would be addressed as far in the design phase, and then, "Construct a ten-foot wide multi-use trail on Cunningham Avenue from Kenyon Road to Airport Road," which is already identified in the bike's master plan, "and use integral public art at key locations, including the I-74 interchange, Perkins Country Club Road intersection, and the railroad overpass on Vian Street." And it has been mentioned, of course, about the I-74 interchange, IDOT did make comments that that would likely not be feasible, but again, that they were willing to work with the city and work with us on being able to come up with something that would be both safe, non-distracting, but also would still add and reflect the character of the corridor and of Urbana, and in that location. Decorative seat walls in strategic areas to screen parking and define edges, native prairie plantings in the I-74 interchange infields, future mini-park trail headed Salient Branch on the east side of Cunningham Avenue, and then optional layouts for visitor center near Country Club and Perkins Road, and then, of course, finally, was to construct an optional roundabout at the intersection of Country Club and Perkins Road, which IDOT, in their later comments, mentioned that they would likely not allow at that location due to the, some of the reasons that Mr. Zico mentioned in his presentation. So again, I just wanted to further reiterate also that this is a concept plan, that none of this is, are, none of this has actually been budgeted for, it's not set in stone, what you see in the plan is, is not things that are necessarily going to happen as they are depicted in the plan. This basically gives us guideline to follow in going forward and implementing, doing the design phase and engineering phase, would determine the actual final design elements that would be used and the infrastructure improvements that would be made in the corridor. Also, another item to note is that the study, in the study is that all of the recommended projects can be completed within the existing Cunningham Avenue right-of-way, and then also, the only other potential impacts to properties along the corridor might be the elimination of some driveways, and that goes along with the recommendation to eliminate certain driveway accesses at key points, which of course would be worked out with, in coordination with IDOT, and of course, the business owners that are along the corridor and/or property owners. No zoning changes are required or recommended as part of the study. And then, the financial impact is in the study also, and it breaks it down into four different sections, and their estimated, total estimated cost, not including a roundabout, is six and a half to eight million dollars in current dollars, and it's anticipated that a majority of the engineering design and implementation costs would come from TIF four funds. It would likely be done in phases, and that would likely be dictated by the amount of funding that's available, and also, where there might be a major investment along the corridor. Somebody wants to come in and do a large project in a certain location along the corridor, we would certainly look at that area first as somewhere to incorporate these types of improvements, and, but there is also a chance, because it is a U.S. route, that there would be some potential for federal grants or funds for beautification or to implement some of these changes. And so, with that, we're requesting that the city council make a motion to accept the Cunningham Avenue beautification final report, and so if anybody has any questions or wants to make the motion, then feel free.
Brandon.
Yeah, maybe I'll make a motion.
Excuse me, yeah, I will maybe make the motion first, and then just give rationale and some comments on it. So I would move that we, that we accept the Cunningham Avenue beautification final report.
A motion by Bowersack, seconded by Smythe. Brandon?
So, as you probably saw in the Plan Commission minutes, or in the news gazette coverage about IDOT sort of rejecting Urbana's plans for Cunningham, there are some, there's some discussion about the issues of art, public art, about roundabouts, and about whether it's even a wise expenditure in these economic times, and so I just wanted to say how I feel and how I think my constituents feel. First off, on the issue of art, this is called the Cunningham Beautification Plan, I think nobody should be surprised that art is part of it, just like it was on Philo Road. I think we shouldn't be surprised that art, the budget is something like ten to fifteen percent, I think, of the total budget in the whole Cunningham plan, ten to fifteen percent of that is for art, and then, of course, there's benches and lighting and pavement and all of those pieces, and I think that's entirely appropriate. I think art is one component of beautification of this corridor, as with Philo Road, that we don't want to leave out. Part of the goal here was to make this corridor not look the same as every other intersection and interchange and corridor in the state of Illinois, and IDOT might want to do that because that's what IDOT does, right? They build lots of places, and it's easy to make them cookie cutter and follow the manual, but they have different goals than we do. Our goal is to make this something special, not the same as every other place in this state, and to give Cunningham Avenue a leg up and improve its economic development. So, I'm completely on board with this plan, and I would ask that staff push back on IDOT and negotiate what's possible. I know, we hired these consultants because they have experts in, they have expertise in public art and working it into projects, they've done it and negotiated with the Indiana Department of Transportation successfully, and so we should continue the conversation with IDOT to see what can be done with public art in this corridor too. And on roundabouts, my feelings are similar. I support at least giving them a fair consideration. IDOT, you know, IDOT has been behind, it's no surprise what IDOT wrote in their letter, they're, they're a little behind the times in their adoption of new things, and of course, it's easy to just take the old things from the traffic manual and do them over again. But roundabouts have been used in lots of other states and lots of other places and proven to be safer, lots of the facts that Gary gave are correct. I don't know for sure whether it'll be the final choice and the final best thing for this specific intersection with the details of the easements and the space and the lanes, but it at least deserves a fair consideration on the engineering and the safety merits. So I also would ask that staff push back on IDOT via a letter or meeting and communication to, to make sure that roundabouts, as well as public art, have fair consideration in the Cunningham corridor. Lastly, to the issue of, is this a wise expenditure? I mean, to me, when the economy gets bad, you don't cut back your plans for economic development on a key corridor, you say, wow, how can we get this started soon? What piece of this can we begin even sooner? So, you know, this is a long-term plan, it started before the economy got bad, and we're not going to be done with all these phases until after the economy gets better again, but, but you don't start cutting back because the economy's bad and say, well then, we're not going to give a leg up to Cunningham Avenue. I think that's backwards. And I support the plan, at the two meetings I've been at, when the Cunningham Avenue business owners were there, I think it's clear they support the plan, and we've seen that, and that the plan fits with what they want for the corridor, and making it a place that feels a little special and looks good and is more attractive to shoppers by car and walking and biking. My one suggestion for economic development in this corridor is that staff consider some sort of matching grant, some way to help property owners make their share of these improvements on their property. So just like in downtown, we have TIF rip loans, and we have facade improvements that are either grants or matching grants or loans, the same thing could really work here in helping owners along Cunningham to, on their property, improve their facades, or improve their parking lots by adding tree planters and breaking up the massive concrete that's on Cunningham, or adding bike racks and bike parking, adding lighting, any of those sorts of things, adding landscaping that would improve the look of the corridor on their side of the property line. It seems like we should help them to do, and that's the one, one suggestion I'd make, but I really feel that this whole thing is the right thing to do, I support the public art component, I support fair consideration for roundabouts, I support this expenditure in these economic times, and, and so I support the motion to move ahead.
Who is first here? Charlie?
To very briefly add to, to Brandon's comments, which I totally agree with, the issue of, you know, I'm very disappointed with IDOT's reaction to this, I think that, you know, really bothered me that we have some very well-known consultants, and they're basically, you know, waving their hand at the work and saying they're wrong, and I think that's very short-sighted on IDOT's part, and I hope they'll reconsider. There are lots of other communities that have done good public art along the interstate, and I think, given the economic times and change of administration, we know there are going to be some new programs coming down the pike, we need to be in position to be ready to go with projects that, you know, could go faster if the money were available. So, you know, we should be prepared. The other aspect that I very strongly agree with Brandon is the idea of landscaping and such, that isn't as costly an item, you know, improving the curb cuts, doing some landscaping, that's on the less expensive side of thing, and yet it goes a great. thing, and yet it goes a great, it goes, it goes, it goes a great deal towards improving the look and feel of, of the corridor, which sorely needs improvement. And if in fact, that is, you know, like the, you know, tied with Lincoln Avenue as, as the major entrance to the city, it behooves us to, to make it look better. So, thank you.
Dennis?
Well, I'm very much in favor of improving the gateway appearance that Cunningham Avenue presents to those of us who are driving into the city, whether we're coming home or whether we're just visiting for the first time. I think that many good aspects of the plan that is presented by the design firm can be implemented at a reasonable cost. The planning commission talked, reviewed the plan and the chair had many concerns about cost and feasibility. These are comments that I guess are, are timely because the economy is slightly different than it was a year ago when the, the planning stages began, but we didn't ask these same questions specifically of the Philo Road beautification plan, which we just, we just adopted. Of course, we are implementing that plan over a period of years and we've chosen certain parts of it. We've directed the staff to initiate certain parts of it in phases rather than trying to create the entire plan overnight. And this roadway will have the same approach. It has different funding possibilities because it is in a different TIF district than other parts of the city. It has expanded businesses already on the northern end of Cunningham Avenue that can help fuel the growth in the retail value of the properties that will fill the TIF coffers for that area. And I think that if we increase the attractiveness and the, and the overall appearance of this corridor, we will be getting foot up on the improvements that we, I would expect would be happening on, along that corridor. It will make the properties more appealing for new businesses to be established. And already, we're seeing some changing ownership of the properties at the north end of the corridor and new businesses have been open, are actually appearing at some of these locations. I have probably the most exotic aspect of the plan is the suggestion of creating a plant-like, frond-like sculpture that might embrace the two different sides of the interstate. This would be like a huge piece of public art. IDOT was not favorable to the construction of such a thing, and they cited, you know, possible reasons why motorists would be distracted by seeing and looking at this artwork from the highway. They didn't explain then why billboards are less destructive than public art, or especially billboards that may in future be flashing, changing imagery every 10 seconds, or, you know, variously lit. We do have an interstate highway, Interstate 70 to the south of us, and when you approach it and you're on the highway and you're going through Effingham, there's a, you know, five-story white-lit giant Christian cross that's visible for miles in all directions. And apparently that was on, of course, that was on public land, but IDOT hasn't demanded that that be removed or shielded because of it being a distraction to those who are traveling. Probably in some respects, it's become an icon for travelers on, going east and west on I-70. I want to address a few other things. I think that Charlie is right, that the plantings are a good way to, to start this and initiate the program. And also, I'm in favor of the small retaining walls or screening walls, and some of them will have benches, because they provide a way of slightly masking some of the features that are along, along the corridor. The corridor has a lot of automobile sale and resale lots, and these may be effectively beautified by low shrubs or a two-and-a-half-foot decorative wall, which would also provide a person a place to sit if they were waiting for the bus, traveling during, using the public transportation. I, I would encourage the city to consider the roundabout as an alternative to straight-on intersections of traffic. And I say that partly through my experiences traveling in Europe, where I was in Hungary and I was in Germany and in Italy, and I came upon, and especially some of the countries I stayed at, a constant use of roundabouts. It allowed traffic on different state highways to meet and, and change direction to go to different destinations. All you require are four signs, one at each approaching, approach the intersection that clearly indicate the directions that one would go to reach their destinations. So, yeah, I think that the, many of those were in, outside the city limits of cities, but there were also quite a few inside the city and they seemed to operate just fine on major highways. If the people in Illinois have and aren't used to them because of lack of experience, yes, they can go up to various communities nearby and their travels and stop and check out roundabouts. And you mentioned one in Indiana, and there was one in Marshall, Michigan. There are some in New Jersey. I would suggest that the city choose, or the, maybe the city council choose one of the sections to begin with, to begin initiating the, the program in a phasing kind of manner. And I would like to suggest starting near the expressway because that's the true interstate gateway area. And that is the place that we could really use the installation of sidewalks between Kenyon Road and Perkins Road. There have been instances, well, it's obvious that people have been wanting to walk along the Cunningham Avenue, and there are actually footpaths, you know, in the earth in some of these places, and I think it would only behoove the city to actually make them safe, navigable, navigable walking paths. So I support the, the acceptance of this plan. It doesn't mean that we're going to follow every single absolute detail of the plan, and some of the features may be remod, modified or redesigned, but in general, I think it's true that, as Brandon said, that it's a good time to support the growth and the potential growth of that area and encourage it. And the beautification plan, we have to realize, there was a list of, I don't know, it was like, looked like 12 different meetings and planning sessions that were held involving all the participants in the north Cunningham area, including several presentations to the business groups. So we've had adequate, adequate input from all these people and they support the plan. So I don't think it's, it behooves the city now to back down and say that this is not a good plan. I think we should follow the plan and I recommend doing so.
Robert?
Yes, I'd like to add my two cents to this whole process. When I first saw the plan, I saw, I saw one of the best design concepts for roadways I've seen in years in terms of how they took the basic elements and put them together. I don't understand IDOT's views. We didn't change the fundamental engineering of these highways or anything like that. All we're doing is changing the aesthetics of them. And I think in a creative way, they've approached it. And I think from a personal point of view, it's not pure engineering as IDOT would see it. But the elements within the concept are strictly civil engineering methods, except they're, changed the form. And when it comes to change, people have difficulty with change. And I think the roundabout concept has been used in Europe for years. We're just behind the times and we need to get, get on board and try to find out what we can do with it and push the conservative engineers. That's basically what it's all about.
Lynn Barnes?
I too am generally supportive of this plan. I think to address the concerns of a lot of, of our constituents, you know, it is just a plan. It's a roadmap. It's something that gets changed over time. None of this money is planned to be spent like in the next few, several months. It'll be more completely vetted. The concepts will be more, you know, further vetted and not unlike Philo Road, you know, there were a lot of things about Philo Road that we didn't do, you know, because we couldn't afford, or we changed it to make it more affordable or to make it fit better with some of the neighbors and property owners. So, you know, we'll be doing the same things with this plan, and it is. It's just that, it's a plan. It gives us kind of a vision to work for and we kind of alter it along the way as we have the funding and as others, you know, contribute in terms of ideas. So I think it's well worth supporting and we, we definitely need to have hope for the future, you know, despite the fact that we are in a now identified recession, so. But it doesn't mean we're going to stop having ideas and vision because we've got to keep going.
Charlie?
Quick, quick addition I forgot to mention earlier, you know, extending that, we have a public arts commission, you know, there's several million dollars in public art here, but I don't expect the city to pay for all of that. I expect the public arts commission to take some seed money from the city and, and use it to, to leverage private donations and so on to help this happen. You know, the same way, we might take city seed money and leverage it to help private landowners along there to improve their property. And it's the same kind of thing. And so, so a lot of it, and again, the other thing to do is we need to have some money upfront to batch any federal monies that might come along or any state monies that come along. And that's the kind of thing. So we have to be ready to go on all of these fronts, and I think we have the mechanism. We've, we've done it before. And yeah, the, the economics are a little different right now, but, but that doesn't mean we, we can't be prepared. So, thank you.
I'd like to just add a couple of comments too. Not only are there roundabouts in Indiana, there are roundabouts in Iowa. I've seen them. I've driven through them. And this idea of slowing down traffic, I thought it was good that Gary pointed out the savings on maintenance in terms of the lights, but it also is a sustainability effort. It prevents people from having to stop and go. They can slow their car down but keep moving, which is more fuel efficient. And the county spent a lot of money redoing the tower on the courthouse. And if you're coming down Cunningham Avenue from the north, you see this beautiful view of the courthouse, and I think it'd be very fitting if Cunningham Avenue became more beautiful because it's, it doesn't look good right now and it is a major entryway to the city, so. Anybody else have a comment? All right. This is a motion, so all those in favor of the motion to accept the Cunningham Avenue beautification final report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next is ordinance number 2008-12-137 and ordinance amending ordinance number 2008-10-120. An ordinance approving a major variance to allow the construction of a three-foot addition to an existing garage, reducing required front yard setback in the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District at 401 Delaware Avenue, the wire property. Robert Myers?
Thanks. Good evening. On, on October 6th, 2008, this body approved a major variance for 401 West Delaware Avenue, and that was to allow a garage to be extended out three feet even with the house along Carl Avenue. And the garage is to be turned into living space for the owners, one of which has a mobility problem and need to be all on the first floor. One of the conditions, however, for approval of that variance was that, that the driveway be closed up on that side. They were, they were building a driveway on the other side of the, the corner, building a new garage on the other side to replace their old. And the officianters who actually live much of the year out of the country, they've been commuting back and forth with the representatives here locally, and they indicated that, unfortunately, they believe that one condition would be a problem because they would like to be able to use the old driveway as a drop-off point for one of the residents there, as again, they have mobility problems. Normally, this would have, not closing that driveway could have presented a problem because then driveway's only going to be 13 and a half feet deep until the property line and average car is a little over 16 feet long, so it would extend it out in the right-of-way and it would block the sidewalk. But in this particular case, there's no sidewalk on this block on Carl Avenue. So as a matter of fact, it won't present a problem to leave this other driveway open along Carl Avenue. So city staff agreed that we would return and ask this body if it would be willing to change the conditions to allow the other driveway to remain. So city staff is recommending approval and the Urbana Zoning Board of Appeals also has recommended approval to modify that one condition.
Brandon?
I just had one quick question. Thank you, Robert. Which is, so 30 years from now, you know, they sell the house, they move on, new people buy the house. It's not a garage anymore, it's a, you know, a living space, but there still is a curb cut with a 13 and a half foot driveway. And somebody starts parking cars there. When that scenario happens, what do we do next?
Well, we talked about that. We even talked about the idea of placing a sign that says handicap parking only, but since the sign will be on private property, there's not really a good way for the city to enforce that. So I guess the bottom line is that as long as there's, as long as there's no sidewalk on that side, if there's parking in that driveway, if it does encroach three feet into the right-of-way, the city can live with that. It won't cause a problem in terms of blocking people getting back and forth. Because the right, because the right-of-way is so wide, the driveway's still going to be 30 feet long, so there's going to be plenty of room to park a car. And it's not an ideal situation, but I think it's one certainly that will be fine. We do, we are placing a requirement, however, that should a sidewalk ever be installed in that block, that that curb cut would need to be closed up at the, at the owner's expense.
Lynn?
I'd like to move approval with the considerations as outlined in 1, 2, 3, under the staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, motion by Barnes, seconded by Stevenson. Any other discussion?
Aye.
Okay.
Um, I just, the reason I, I was going to make the motion, based on, I think, the thoroughness of, of the considerations that have been made and the unusual circumstances, that I think it's, it'd be good for the city to work with the citizens of Urbana. They want to be here, so let's make it, you know, a happy place for them.
Dennis?
I just wondered if there had been any comment from neighbors or people on the block since the discussion? If there'd been any new feedback? They seemed supportive, I guess, before, and I just wondered if there had been any comments?
Not any additional feedback since the original Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. At that meeting, one of the neighbors spoke in favor of it. Another neighbor down the street was concerned about the new driveway, or, excuse me, the new detached garage being built along Delaware and how far that extended out, but we didn't receive any comments about the, this driveway on, around the corner off of Carl.
Charlie?
I don't have any problem with this particular variance being granted, but I'm, I'm struck by the irony of a couple of situations, you know, that we've, we've given some variances for some very large projects and let, you know, apartments on small lots go to, you know, but more than maximum size so that they could, you know, sort of maximize their, their, their profit from, from these properties. And yet, last year, we had a lot of trouble getting a variance for rebuilding a garage in place. And then this year, recently, ZBA turned down a, a garage that was a rebuild on a, in a small lot. And I, I'm having some trouble seeing some consistency here and, and understanding the logic of some of these. And so I would appreciate possibly reviewing some of these issues with, with CD at a, at a committee meeting in January. Thank you.
If there are no further comments, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersack?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Next, there is a...
I move that we go into closed session for the purpose of property, property acquisition issues pursuant to five Illinois consolidated statutes, 120 over 2C5.
I second that. I second that.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes? Yes. Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.